Good evening, everyone. As it is 5:15 PM on Thursday, April 14th, I will call the meeting to order. As is customary during the annual reorganization meeting of the Board of Education, the superintendent presides over the meeting until board officers are elected. Once the board president and vice president are elected, I will then turn the meeting over to the Board of Education President to continue the meeting. The first item on our agenda is item 1.01, verification of unofficial election results. I ask that Mrs. Mary LaPac, Chief Communications Officer, provide the unofficial election results for the April 2nd, 2024 election. Mrs. LaPac?
Good evening. On Election Day, voters in the Rockwood School District decided upon candidates for two open seats on the Board of Education. The unofficial election results posted from St. Louis County and Jefferson County show that Tammy Ronberg and Phil Milligan have received the most votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LaPac. Moving on to item 1.02, administer the oath of office to new board members. I will ask that Mr. Phil Milligan and Ms. Tammy Ronberg join me just by the flag on the side of the stage.
I say your name.
Hi, Tammy Ronberg.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I am.
That I am.
That I am Tamara Jo Ronberg.
That I am Tamara Jo Ronberg.
At least 24 years.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And a resident tax payer.
And a resident tax payer.
Of the Rockwood.
Of the Rockwood.
Our Board.
Our Board.
School District.
School District.
In the state of Missouri.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
And that I will abide by.
And that I will abide by.
And uphold.
And uphold.
The Rockwood, our Board of Districts.
The Rockwood, our Board of Schools.
Board member, so.
Board member, so.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
To me myself.
To me myself.
You know.
You know.
I say your name.
Hi, Tammy Ronberg.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I am.
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 Congratulations.
The next item, 1.03, is the reorganization of board member officers. As an overview, in a moment, I will open the nominations for board president. You may nominate yourself or another member of the board. I will take those nominations in order received. Once there is a pause in the announcement of nominations, I will ask for a motion to close nominations. Once we have a second and any necessary discussion, I will ask Mrs. Sodowsky to conduct a roll call, a roll call vote to close nominations. We will then proceed with a vote of each nomination. Are there any questions? Okay. Hearing none. To begin, I will open the floor to take nominations for board president.
I nominate Director Lynn Midgett for president.
Are there additional nominations?
I'd like to nominate Director Ronberg.
Are there additional nominations? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations for the Office of President for the Rockwood Board of Education.
So moved.
We have a motion? And we have a second. Roll call vote, I believe.
Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Imig?
Yes.
Mrs. Midgett? Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Ronberg? The motion carries.
Okay, we will start with, actually, Director Lynn Midgett.
No, since she won.
No, she hasn't.
We just closed the nomination process, right? Okay. And again, all board members understand the process as it relates to the vote itself? Okay? We will start with a vote for Lynn Midgett to serve as the Rockwood Board of Education President. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is actually roll call. Roll call.
Mr. Catigan? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Imig?
Yes.
Mrs. Midgett? Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Ronberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
The motion passes.
We now have a new Board of Education President. Congratulations, President Midgett.
Thanks to the team, I appreciate it.
All right, one more we have is actually for the vice presidency, okay? So the same rules, as I mentioned earlier, will apply for the vice president.
I would like to nominate Tamara Ronberg.
Are there additional nominations?
I'll nominate Carrie Bockert.
Are there additional nominations? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Rockwood Board of Education. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote one more time. To close nominations.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Imig?
Yes.
Mrs. Midgett? Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Ronberg? Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, we will not go into the process itself for the vice president of the Board of the Rockwood Board of Education. Again, we will start with Tammy Ronberg. We'll roll call vote again. Those in favor?
Mrs. Imig?
Yes.
Mrs. Midgett?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Ronberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Congratulations, Vice President Ronberg. Okay. Done that. So at this time, I shall yield the gavel to President Lynn Midgett, and she is going to continue the reorganization meeting.
Thanks a lot. All right, I'm assuming we're at 1.06, and this is the election of treasurer. Do we go through the nomination process?
All right, I think we need a motion here, so make a motion.
There's a motion that's written on there, just read that motion.
She does it. Oh, I'm, oh, yeah. Motion that the Chief Financial Officer, Cindy Bias, continues to serve as the treasurer of the Rockwood School District for the 2024-2025 fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Imig?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Ronberg? Mrs. Midgett?
Yes.
The motion carries.
I now have a motion that Janet Sodowsky, if I can say her name right, continue to serve as the Secretary of the Board of Education for the 2024-2025 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Imig?
Yes.
Mrs. Ronberg? Mrs. Midgett?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
1.08, the authorization to continue the use of the current signature plate. The motion is to authorize the district to continue the use of the current signature plate until the new plate bearing the signatures of the 2024-2025 president and treasurer are received.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Imig?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Ronberg? Mrs. Midgett?
Yes.
The motion carries.
1.09, this is discussion only, and the new board member orientation procedures. So, we can all, everyone can talk about this as needed, but both Phil will not, Phil will be signed a mentor, and I think the thinking is that the mentor will be Tammy. I'd like to point out, this is Tammy's third mentor that she has, third year in a row, so she's really good at it. We also have in our library on board docs, the mentor process, and if you go in there and take a look at that, that's really good. We worked on that last year, we have that kind of outline how that will happen. And then, of course, you can reach out to any of us at any time for support or help or questions, and we are here to ensure that your work with the board is good for the district and good for yourself. Did I leave out anything?
Can I make a recommendation that the MSBA training started sooner rather than later? I felt it was very beneficial to go. Bob and I went to the very first one, I'm in Columbia.
And I think you'll quickly learn why we call Janet the GOAT, so as you, in this process.
There's just one additional item, and that is board seating ultimately is something that you all, the seven board members, will ultimately need to determine. I will say that there's been some history of past practice, there's been some history of the mentee physically being seated relatively close to the mentor, but that'll be up to the desires of the Board of Education as a whole. But those are two items for board member orientation as relates to process for now. Can promise you, there'll be more coming in the future.
Yeah, I had a question, is do we sit according to seniority, and we've never done that in my history here, or Tammy, so it's just, just next to our mentors, or we're logically...
You and Janet tell us where to sit, and that's where we'll sit.
Well, Janet kind of does that, so, but yeah, next to the mentors is good, I mean, and we're, Dr. Kane, where you want us positioned, there's different superintendents over the years have done it a little differently, so we would value your input as well.
At this point, typically, the president and the board of, the superintendent are seated relatively close to each other. Outside of that, really the purview of the board.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to discuss the placement before we go into close, to come back out in the placement?
I would like to put it in your hands as the secretary of our board, I trust your judgment.
Okay.
I concur.
So moved.
I know, I was gonna say, we could swap the way you are now, to move Phil and Bob, switch them over, and then Phil would be by Tammy, and then, other than that, if everybody's good where they're at.
Yeah.
I feel like that would work, if that works for you.
Yeah, it's the same.
So after we come back out of close, then we'll move those around so that everybody's in their correct positions, if everybody's good with that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So, as we, the practice in the, forever since I have been on the board, it is time for us to read and reaffirm our Code of Ethics. And we do this as a group, to go through and read the numerous items on here, and we just round robin, and so...
Director Midgett, can you make the motion?
Yes, ma'am, I can. I motion that the current board members reaffirm their commitment to the Code of Ethics.
So moved.
Second. Any discussions are needed, clarification?
Only that I don't think I have the time.
I will, I'll share. You can even share a microphone.
Do we, we need a vote, Janet?
Read it first, and then at the end, we'll finish the vote.
I can start?
Please do.
I'll start from here. To govern and control the affairs of the district as provided by law.
Yep, just one.
To discover and interpret the educational needs as a student in the district throughout the business, as a guide to developing, setting priorities.
To exercise judgment in reviewing, considering, and voting on district-wide policies affecting the operation of the schools.
To oversee the management and fiscal control of the schools as provided by law, and to review, evaluate, and judge the effectiveness of the educational program.
The roles of the member of the Board of Education are to recognize that it is the responsibility of the board to see that the schools are properly administered and not to administer them.
To hold the superintendent-designee responsible for the implementation of board policies and the administration of the district.
To give the superintendent or designee authority to commensurate with his or her responsibility.
To vote on board matters only after considering the recommendations of the superintendent or designee and any, and any, oh my gosh, I can't see, and any interested citizens.
To maintain a working rapport with other members of the board and the superintendent.
To respect and encourage the right of others to hold the express agreement.
To support the board once a legal decision has been made by majority vote.
To avoid inappropriate or disparaging remarks in or out of board meetings about other board members or their opinions.
To realize that the responsibilities are district-wide.
To recognize that authority rests with the board in legal session, and no individual board member has legal authority to request action from the staff or to otherwise speak or act on behalf of the board with the exception of the board president.
To avoid comments which may be interpreted as undermining the decision of the board or the administration of the district.
To assure that special committees, when appointed, have a well-defined objective, and there is understanding that the committee serves in an advisory capacity.
To respect, fair, just, impartial, honest, all serious actions.
To uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and regulations, and comply with all laws, rules, policies, and regulations as they apply to the board.
To maintain a professional decorum when discussing school matters in and out of board meetings, including but not limited to refraining from making disparaging or inappropriate comments regarding students, staff, or the Rockwood community.
In addition, members of the Board of Education will work through the superintendent or designee and his or her staff, not over or around them.
To support the superintendent's or designee's effort to appoint the most qualified persons as employees of the district.
Reinforce the efforts of the superintendent slash designee and the staff so they may perform their assigned responsibilities in the most effective manner.
Provide the superintendent or designee counsel as requested or required.
Make every effort to keep all citizens informed of quality, condition, and public school and education of the district.
Initiate and implement all efforts to secure adequate financial support for the district.
Assure that all transactions of the district are ethical, open, and above board.
Conduct activity in alignment with the board's policies and regulations and the vision, mission, and core values of the district.
Fulfill all professional duties with honesty and integrity, and always act in a trustworthy and responsible manner.
Support the principle of due process and protect the civil and human rights of all individuals.
So the motion is that the current board members will reaffirm their commitment to the Code of Ethics. Roll call.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Imig?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
Ms. Ronberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Midgett?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. 1.11. Is there a motion?
The next page.
Okay.
Top of the next page.
So the motion is that policy and regulation 0342, nepotism, conflict of interest, and financial disclosure are re-adopted as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the policy and regulation 0342?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Imig?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Ms. Ronberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Midgett?
Yes.
The motion carries.
1.12, board standing committees and assignments. The... No motion?
There's no motion, this is discussion.
Okay.
Of the different committees, and on this sheet in front of you, it tells who current members are of these different committees of the board. So at this time, usually there's conversation, and you all discuss who you want, or who wants different committees to be on different committees.
If I may just interject, there are two components that are new to this. The capital planning advisory committee has been something that's been discussed about in the past, but we made sure that there was a write-up, a general frame of what the work of this committee will in fact look like, and that's why you see it included. It's a second-to-last committee for discussion and ultimately assignment. And then the very last one is an advocacy committee. I know you'll be working through a conversation with the other committees that are listed on this particular agenda item. With this one, I think it is critical that there's some real conversation around some very clear guardrails of what the committee's work will be and what it in fact won't be. If you think about what you just affirmed with the policy 0340 as it relates to Code of Ethics, one of those actually relates to, in addition, members of the Board of Education will, that sixth statement talks about securing adequate financial support for the school district. And so there is a space for that to become an extension of the, that committee's work to become an extension of the policy itself, but I really believe it's very important to have some very bright lines of some guardrails of what that committee's work will be and what it won't be.
Do we need to define that committee before we assign members to that, or assign members and then define the committee and come back and...
I think it would make some sense to actually have conversation around the work of that committee, and then ultimately assign a board member or members, depending upon how you decide to delegate that authority afterward.
Is that something that the co-committee should outline or define, or should involve? Or do we have that as an open discussion in terms of...
How about we use this as an opportunity to prime the pump, and as we're having the conversation about the other committees, I think we land on that by the time we get to that one. All right.
One of some thoughts I had as I was reviewing the committees in the past couple days, is I think it's really important for everyone on the board to serve on a committee, at least one, hopefully two. When I went through and looked at the number of people, I think there are 12, 12 spots for people. And so historically, my understanding is that the board president does not sit on the committees, and so that allows some other people to be on the committees in which I served on previously, which makes me sad because those are, you know, really an opportunity to do great work. So again, I think it's important that everyone, you know, participate in committee assignments and the work and the movement that we get from our work in committees. So with that being said, let's just start at the top and talk about the Missouri School Board Association. Right now, we have Jessica, Izzy, and Tammy serving.
I would like to continue to serve as a delegate.
I would like to stay as well.
I am not gonna do it this year.
All right.
I have a question. As I looked through the committees and heard about the committees earlier, I would just ask for your opinions, would that be something that would possibly help a brand-new person to maybe become oriented to school board work?
Definitely.
More quickly?
Yeah, definitely, Phil. Attending any of the MSBA conferences and all of the sessions that they have keeps you abreast of what is happening with school boards across the state, and really helps you network and have a deeper understanding of our work together.
There's also a growing PLN, Professional Learning Network, specifically in the St. Louis region when it comes to MSBA's work, that's pretty powerful and very much connected, so it's, you saw me shaking my head?
Yeah, that's, that I would, I would be interested in serving.
Now, with that being said, we all participate in all the different, all the different opportunities with MSBA.
Sure.
To learn and to grow, and that professional networking opportunity that we have.
But now you are a vote.
Right.
As a delegate.
As a delegate. So you get to be a vote with us.
And just so you're aware, the delegates meet twice a year at the MSBA conference in the fall, and the summer summit in June, and that's usually when the delegate committee meets, and the three representatives would attend that meeting. And that's usually when the delegate committee meets and the three representatives would attend that meeting and, and vote on behalf of Rockwood. So those two things are usually the same week every year. So you kind of know ahead of time when, and tomorrow we'll go over the dates of those. I know what they are for this year. So.
So are you thinking or?
No, I, I would be willing to do that.
Okay. All right. Next on the list is the Policy Review Committee. And Izzy, you've been on that for the past two years, I believe.
Policy? No, it's, it's my first year.
Okay.
But someone else can take it. The Policy Review?
I'd like to be on that committee if no one else would.
Absolutely. So the Special Schools District Governing Council. So there's one main person and one alternative. Although last year it was Carrie and myself and, uh, and I, again, I'm having a hard time giving this up because this is my, my love, my passion. But I think it worked well that we both were very, very involved and, and actually attended the meetings together. And you can do that. We, as Rockwood, we only have one vote, but you can have both the, the member and the alternate, uh, attend the meetings and, and do that. So.
I would like to continue to serve.
So I would suggest Carrie that you would be the member, not the alternate. Okay.
And that said, I would be willing to be the alternate.
Okay. That makes sense to me. And, uh, the Communications Outreach and Public Engagement Committee, three people usually serve on this committee. In 2324, it was Carrie, myself, and Tammy.
I would like to continue as well.
I would like to join that committee.
So Recognition and Awards Committee, one person sits on that committee and I don't know, Jessica, I'm gonna look down at you to see if you would have time for that.
I would like to continue. And we'll talk about it later.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I think I'm on it.
You are on it.
Yeah, I would like to continue.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to get everyone involved here and not have one person doing too much. And then the last one, standing committees, and then we'll move on to the Capital Planning, the Wellness Committee. Okay. And now the new committee, Capital Planning Advisory Committee.
I would like to volunteer to be a member of that committee if I could, please.
That makes sense to me.
I think it's calling your name, Bob.
I do.
And may, may Cindy forgive that I ever volunteered.
So. I think it's.
We've already talked about it. It's fine.
I didn't know you could give a spot raise.
So now to the discussion about the Recommended Advisory Committee. Advocacy Committee, I'm sorry.
So how many people are gonna sit on that? What are you thinking?
Well, first I think we need to think about what, what is the purpose of it? And I know having, and I've mentioned this before at previous board meetings, about having the advocacy and being aware of what is happening with legislature that's affecting public education, our funding sources. And so I think it's important that we as a board stay informed and that we keep our community informed as to what's happening. So that's kind of the mission I see of it, is communicating out to our community and to our, keeping all fellow board members informed of what's happening with legislation affecting public education.
Just a thought, that could take the form of during our comment, board and superintendent comment period where that would happen. In terms of the frequency of count, that feels as though that would be quieter in the fall, but in the spring, it could be pretty, pretty active. So. It just feels like there's definitely a space. If, if that is the direction the board's going to go, that they're, they're, we could either carve out a... I don't think there's a need to do that. I'm debating this in my head. Sorry. This is a circular conversation. The whole world is seeing it. I apologize for that. I do think there's a space during that, the comment period to be able to provide that, that call out of updates for our community.
So if I could ask a refining question here a little bit. So is this a inform, information, providing information to, to the board? Or is this, or is the committee going to then own actions if we want to get involved in shaping legislation or responding back to the legislature as a board?
I would think it's both.
I agree.
But I think it's sometimes being informed will lead us to some actions.
Yeah.
If, if it would deem to be necessary or appropriate.
Right. So let, let's just say, for example, you know, the legislature is moving down the path of cutting funding for schools. All right? We would, you would, this committee would inform the board that that's the legislation that's currently in committee being reviewed. And then this board may decide to take action to, to, as a board vote to say, we'd like a declaration or submission of some kind to the legislature saying we are opposed to Senate Bill 1027 because of its impact on school funding and after that, school education and quality of education because of funding. Am I understanding that correctly?
With that framing, that makes sense to me. That these committee, this committee member or committee members are gathering information, having that awareness, then providing an update to our Board of Edu-, the Board of Education. And whether it's a statement, proclamation, whatever that looks like, the board as a whole is deciding if that's something that it wants to do. So it's a loose tight kind of coupling of how that would operate.
Now, this, this could range anything from, uh, financial, you know, jurisdiction, the, you know, student's school of choice, anything really, book banning, anything really that's affecting our educational environment, uh, you know, for the district.
Those are pretty wide swaths that you were, that you were targeting and some are more sensitive than others.
Yes.
So I do think that it will require some conversation amongst the board of how comfortable, how adamant is the board on, on the variety of topics that could be before. That's, that's part of what I was, when I was talking about guardrails, that's definitely part of the conversation in these two.
Are you thinking it will be important to prioritize what the committee works? What's the most important to the district?
I think establishing a frame before a session begins is important to quite honestly protect the committee. But we also have clarity heading into a session versus having that clarity once a legislative session is up and going.
Shouldn't it also depend on what's actually going on at the time and where we're going, you know what I mean? Like what do they have on their bill? What's going on?
I, I believe through, when we were at MSBA and I sat in a session, a lot of school districts, school boards, I don't want to say proclamation, that's not the best, but goals. And they say, you know, we want to uphold finances that will support public education. So they kind of come up with five to 10.
A platform of sorts.
That's the right word.
Right.
So I would see this, this group defining that, us voting on it, and then they would inform us on our platform.
Right.
That makes sense.
That would likely be a very, very late, probably January, late December, probably January timeframe. If you're doing so by April, it's too late. So between January and ideally February, that would be a targeted window to establish that.
And I think that'd be part of the process of the advocacy is that this committee would be bringing those topics forward as they're being formulated so that we can prioritize them and put them into motion as we move into the legislative sessions.
And we know the state of Missouri tends to repeat and repeat and repeat.
We know trends that are going to appear.
I would see, see this committee meeting over the summer to look at what, what got pretty far, but didn't quite make it because we know it's gonna reappear next year during session.
Do you, do you see this committee also reaching out and having discussions with other districts?
I think clarifying that would be important. And by the beginning of May, the omnibus bill is something that's going to be a unique wrinkle to work through because that could be pieces of four or five different, either House or Senate bills that have come together and trying to decipher and really sift through the wide-ranging nature of an omnibus bill will take some, some work. But yes, that networking and connection is a very good idea.
Just something for us to consider as we look at this board, this, this committee rather, sorry. Two pieces, the first being, given our legislative session, it occurs right after we have school board elections. So you may have a transition of members on this committee for next year's session, right at the moment the legislature is about to get involved, depending upon who's on the committee and what their election cycle is. The second piece though is that this committee can look at a number of things, tell the board what's going on and the board can decide by vote, we're not interested in that, keep us informed, but we're not going to do anything, or wow, we really want to double down on this. This needs to be on the agenda every other meeting from now on until the legislature is over. So that's, that's the power we have to steer the committee to say, yes, we care about this. No, we don't care about something.
And, and also I would, I would assume that you would be part, as superintendent, you would be part of this committee or would you designate someone else on your cabinet to help us?
Uh, we'll work through that, but I, my, my gut says that I'd be more in advise, I don't know, advisory role. We'll figure that out. We'll figure it out, yes. Yep.
There are some resources out there to tap into.
Absolutely.
You mean you don't want to be on every single committee?
Are we still like formulating it? Do we want to have committee assignments to it? That, that can, here's my thinking, is if we had some board members assigned to it, they could rough out some of the platform, what it would look like, the mission of it, and then bring that back to the board as we move forward.
Would this be for this current session? Are we looking at establishing this committee for session 25?
25.
Okay.
We'll continue, those of us that are advocating and being part of MSB now will continue to bring forward what we know.
Right.
As we've done in the past.
Right.
There could be a session at the October MSBA conference, for example, that could help inform this, it's hypothetical, right? That could help inform this work as well, but getting up and going for session of 25, uh, spring of 25 makes sense.
So, so where does the advocacy day activities fit into all this? Yes, next week. But it's every year. So not just this year, but going forward.
Definitely point of conversation. If the MSBA platform aligns with what the, the ideals, the priorities that are identified in the Rockwood school district platform, if there's alignment there, it does make some sense to do so.
Now, how many are you thinking about having in this committee? Tammy?
Three. I would think two to three. At least, at least two, possibly three would be better.
I agree. I would, I would say three as well. Do we need a motion to establish this committee?
We didn't for the other one, for the, for the new committee of the Capital Planning.
The Capital Planning Committee though is, is a cabinet committee that they're asking for a person to be on. This is more like a COPE committee, which is a board committee. So I feel like.
A motion would be fine.
I would, I would move that we, that we have a advocacy committee with the mission of informing the board and community of the, of platforms for legislative issues.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Roll call or roll call vote, please.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Emmig?
Yes.
Ms. Ronberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Midgett?
Yes.
The motion carries.
I would be interested in serving on the committee.
I would too.
Me too.
So thank you all for volunteering to serve on the different committees. The, it's important work, it's crucial work. So I appreciate your diligence here. And I believe it's time to have a motion to go into closed session to discuss legal actions, cause for actions, our litigation, and preparation for negotiations with employee groups.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, vote please.
Mrs. Emmig?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bockert?
Yes.
Mr. Catigan?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Ronberg? Mrs. Midgett?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay.